The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now move to public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, wonderful. We are going to combine item four A and four B together tonight. And we have a presentation by Dr. Berger and Mrs. Clip giving us an update on our wonderful passion project, Princess Polly and Canines for Comfort. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to them. And I know you've invited some guests to join you.
Okay, so thank you so much, District 76 Board of Education. Tonight, we wanted to have this meeting to talk about a few different pieces because as you remember, when we first came to the board back in November and started having this conversation, and you were so kind to say, yes, let's go ahead with Polly. We had promised that we would come back with some data to talk about how Polly has impacted social emotional learning at DLS. Also talk about things in terms of a behavior perspective. So we want to talk tonight about how she's been so involved. What that's meant to our students. We have two students here with us tonight, examine the survey data. Also talk about the implementation plans for both WOOS and WAMs because now that I have had a change of position, Polly has also had a change of position. So she will be in all three buildings. And then also talking about how we will create a new social emotional data collection tool to establish a baseline district wide. So it was really our pilot with the information we collected from DLS. And now it's going to be a new pilot with what we can see district wide. So we would like to start first with none other than Carter Fox coming up to the microphone to let us know how it has been working with Princess Polly.
Dr. Berger, is there a stool there?
It's right here at my feet. And I will also mention that both Carter and Ruby, who are here with us tonight, are students that have just started at WOOS in third grade. So they are part of the expert team over at West Oak Campus that are helping to teach the kids, the older children specifically about how she has been and what's been, what has has been like having Polly in the building. Carter, right here, babe, come on up.
Leave it right there. Stand right here on this step. And you're going to speak right into the microphone, reading your statement to the Board of Education.
On paper?
Uh huh. You're going to read this paper to the Board of Education. You're good.
I enjoy to work with Polly. I like to go for you once you visit our classroom. Represents happiness for all the students.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Carter. And this is Ruby Satcho, who will also be giving a statement to the board.
Polly makes me feel happy because she is easy to talk to. And she is a great snuggler. I am grateful for Polly because she wants every student in the school to feel safe. And I am so happy Dr. Berger got Polly.
Thank you so much. Always so good to hear from students and how Polly has impacted our classrooms. So one of the first pieces we wanted to look at when we put this slideshow together, it was really letting the pictures speak a thousand words. Because just when you look at how our students have interacted with her, schoolwide, communitywide, and all of the different things that she has brought to us, it has been absolutely nothing but pure joy. So if you look right there in the first picture, in many cases, we always had our girl right up front in the office. There were children that always came in and did a quick check in with her before they started their day. And then she would always pop into classrooms. The picture that you see on the right is from a first grade classroom that was doing their daily five. And they were doing vocabulary bingo and they were reading the cards to her and showing her every time that they were getting bingo and excited to read the words out loud to her and all of those types of things. We also, if you look all the way to the left, that picture is students that were in speech that at many times were very reserved, speaking out loud in the classroom. Sometimes it might have been due to a speech impediment. Sometimes it might have been due to a different language. But they always knew every time they said the words to her, it was going to be okay. So a lot of times they played in speech with her. The middle picture shows the artwork that was done. Polly was actually incorporated into our art curriculum. And every student within Diamond Lake had the opportunity to do this different picture of her. And they also displayed these at the art show at Mundaline High School and at Stevenson. And the students were so proud that everyone was drawing what might have been somewhat of the same picture. But when they went and completed it, they did it in their own ways with her different special colors, the tint that they saw in her fur, the backgrounds that they wanted. So it allowed them that creativity for what they felt that they had in their relationship with her. And then of course, if you look all the way to the right, yes, she helped pre-K get their diplomas at graduation. They were very excited about that. And she, of course, will be, continue to be part of the pre-K graduation and maybe eighth grade, Mr. Peterson? We'll figure it out. Yeah. But at any rate, she she absolutely loved having her her capping gown on. We also involved Polly in just about everything that we did when we looked at things for whole buildings. So for example, the picture on the left was when we had our magic bubble maker come as one of our incentive projects for the end of the year. We thought, let's just give it a try. I'm not sure she's going to stand in the bubble. Not a problem. Got right in there. And he was taking bubbles almost up to the ceiling over her and she was just looking up and gazing at him. And then of course, when we look at the picture on the right with our glasses, because we had a big scientific explosion that we needed to take a look at this year out on the playground together, she put those glasses right on and was with students to help that make that same discovery. When we take a look at community engagement, she has participated in all sorts of different things with all sorts of different age groups. And of course, excuse me, of course, also in all sorts of different communities. This picture specifically was from when she marched in the LGBTQ parade in Buffalo Grove with a group of students from the middle school and showing her support. We actually brought her in her carriage that day. So she put her crown on and we decked it all out. And there were many local papers and things that were taking pictures of her and posting her on their websites and things like that for her support. This was also during Fourth of July here in Mundaline. We marched in the dog parade together. She had the incredible opportunity of getting a picture with Miss, Junior Miss, and Little Miss Mundaline. So she had her picture with the royalty as she was decked out in her red, white, and blue. And these two pictures also show, to the left is firefighter Tony, who you know, we honored last year after all the community service he has brought to our district. He became very attached to our baby girl as soon as he met her for the first time. On March 6th, Polly is actually invited to come to his retirement ceremony to help honor him and bring him some awards at the firehouse. And then the one on the right, she was also part of all of our community cuddles projects when we would reach out to different community groups to bring our children to do a little bit of community service. This was at Brookdale Senior Living and they absolutely loved her. They they could not get enough of her. They loved her being there while we were hosting bingo. I also wanted to share these two pieces on the impact on classroom management and behavior, just like Ruby and Carter had both mentioned. It was that feeling of love and snuggles and safety and happiness within the classroom. And many of our teachers had started a different type of reward system in order to be able to earn some extra time with Polly within the classroom. So the picture you see on the left from Camden, he drew of her and wrote her this note and said, Polly, can you come to our classroom? We, we, we earned our 10 cub cards. The other one is from Lily, who was also in the same class, who said, Dear Polly, we are so excited you are coming to the classroom. And we earned 10 cub cards to get you in the classroom. I was so, I'm so excited you are coming. And what are we going to do? Do we play bingo? Or do we play a game? What do you want to do with it? What do you want to do with us? Love, Lily. So the children were having these beautiful correspondences and communications with her just as if she could read the letter, no problem, when she was welcomed into the classroom. This specifically came from our survey results when we were looking at students that were responding in a positive manner to Polly being with us. Ninety-nine percent of our kids know Polly will help them when they need it. Ninety-eight are glad that she's part of the school. Ninety-eight also said that she makes them feel special and 99 feel happy and excited when they see Polly. And it was through all these different lenses that these pieces came apart. For example, she was always part of problem solving with me, with social work, with our speech path, also doing emotional supports whenever we needed to and having some open check-ins with her. She was also part of our daily routine, participating in everything building wide, visiting classrooms on a daily basis. We also worked her into, at the time, what was called the Burger Wall of Fame, when children were called down every Friday to take a picture with me to hang it on the wall. They didn't want it with me anymore. That's fine. They really just wanted the picture with her. But it motivated a lot of our children to show that great behavior and do whatever they could to be respectful, responsible, and safe to get their picture up on the wall. We had a lot of children that also felt special with being able to do the read alouds with her because they knew she was never going to pass judgment on their reading skills whatsoever. So she had a very strong play in English learners and in our bilingual classrooms. And then of course, just like we saw with writing letters, she was always part of the morning greetings. She was always part of dismissal procedures, all that kind of stuff. And then of course, days that we were able to go out to recess together and kids were able to really play with her very freely because we have a fenced in yard. She was able to be back there off the leash and have fun with the kids and they were able to throw the tennis ball back and forth and all that kind of stuff. So the relationships were very consistent and our kids just absolutely loved it. So what are our future plans for our sweet baby girl who's a little knocked out right now? Polly is going to become an active member at West Oak Campus. I have scheduled introductions with WOOS on the 21st and WAMs on the 22nd. So I will be visiting all of those classrooms, not only to introduce her, but also to introduce myself. Many of those children I know in passing are because they have siblings, but they don't really know me on a personal level and don't exactly know my role. So we will be meeting and they'll be introducing her as well. We also have now in every classroom here at Diamond Lake, this mailbox, along with this wannabe Polly stuffy. And this is basically her mail station because our kids always were writing to her. They're still going to have the opportunity to do that. And we want students to know that even though she's not here every single day like she was in the past, she is still thinking about you. She still loves you. She is still here for you. And teachers are going to check their mail once a week. And if there's anything that we find in there that might need to be addressed immediately or in any sort of way, we certainly can take care of that. So she will be available for significant crisis support. We will also have her continued in community involvement. We have several things coming up. This Saturday is a big one. It is right here at Diamond Lake Beach. The Park District calls it Doggy Days. And it is essentially the dogs go out and swim and all this other kind of stuff. Our girl's not getting in that water. However, they have what they like to call a beach wear contest, AKA swimsuit pageant. Hers has been purchased. She will be walking the red carpet on Saturday. We also have a team that we're building here at Diamond Lake and families will get information about this as well for the Strut the Mutt Charity Walk that is sponsored by Canines for Comfort. And then we are also closing out the farmer's market for Mundaline. We will have the whole area where they have it painted with a big Mundaline by Area Coffee, where we are going to be offering read aloud stories, face painting, some arts and crafts tables. And then also our girl will be available for a photo booth along with sparkles. So we're going to make it a big D76 event to close that out. And then we, of course, will also develop a student feedback tool to measure the success district wide that we will be back to present to you next August. So with that, we would like to conclude our presentation tonight with the first Diamond Award of the 2425 school year. And the Diamond Award is an incredible honor and recognition of individuals who possess our mindset, our culture, our core values, and really sparkle on. From service to passion to advocacy and respect, to kindness, love, and equity, to opportunity and nature, it is with pure joy and sincere gratitude that we present tonight's Diamond Award to Canines for Comfort, an organization that is deeply committed to the meaning of Sparkle On. The pictures you saw tonight, the heartfelt statements you heard from our students and the success stories we told about Polly joining our community would not be possible without Canines for Comfort and their incredible staff. They are committed to providing hope and comfort for children and our community through companionship with support animals. Providing dogs for individuals or in schools, fire departments, police departments, and just recently, Lake County Family Courthouse. Canines for Comfort goes above and beyond to find the right service dog for the right people to create that perfect fit. With our continuing efforts to strengthen social emotional learning and mental health and ensure that everyone feels important, supported, and loved, Canines for Comfort by far found the perfect District 76 Diamond. Co-founder Lisa Warnley is here with us tonight to accept this award on behalf of Canines for Comfort. And Lisa, on behalf of the District 76 community, thank you for making us part of your Sparkle On family. We love you.
Would you like to say anything?
You made me cry.
You're more than welcome to. This was completely unexpected and very much appreciated. I love to see everything that Polly has brought to Diamond Lake School District, Mundaline School District, everything that Erica has worked hard with her to make a difference in the life of others. And that's what Canines for Comfort is really about. We're a team. We are an organization that started small and we're going big. So we hope to see you all at Start Your Mutt. And thank you very much for this honor. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Berger, Mrs. Clip, and Lisa. Would you mind taking a picture for us with yourself and Polly so we can celebrate and recognize you throughout the district? And again, thank you so much for your support and your partnership. It's meant the world to us just this past year, but especially these past few months with our own community and bringing your other resources to help us in a time of grief and crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening.
Okay. Thank you again. We will move on to our business agenda. There are a number of items up for action this evening. The first item up for action on the business agenda is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through C as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Sullivan? Yes. Mr. Becker? Ms. Angarola? Yes. Ms. Bayless? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Houghton? Yes. Mr. Candela?
That motion passes. The next item up for action is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires and one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Becker? Ms. Candela? Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, the next item up for action is approving the retirement of the District Superintendent, which I think we don't want to vote on, but we will. I mean, I feel like that's illegal, but we could try. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the retirement of District Superintendent as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? No.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton? Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless? Yes. Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Candela?
Okay, that motion is also reluctantly approved. The next item up on the business agenda is an item for review. And it's reviewing substitute teacher compensation. So I don't know if, Mr. Rogers, if you wanted to speak to that.
Yeah, I've attached memo and some supporting documentation for his survey that went around for substitute teacher pay. So we haven't increased our pay in three years. So this really equates to about a 4% increase every year if we kept up. So I think we're going to start adopting a plan of having some measured increases so we can just make sure we stay competitive with our local districts. So the recommendation is increase it to $130 a day.
Go ahead. Yeah.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's the second attach, I guess, third attachment, depending on what you're looking for. It's called the Substitute Pay Survey. So yeah, we're at 115 currently. Hawthorne and Kildare at 120. Yeah. So this, they've also been talking about raising their pay. But I'd like to measure the data and see what kind of open positions we may still have with the pay increase.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have just one question. Do your, does the current framework for substitutes give any kind of incentive for multiple days worked, not necessarily as a long-term sub, which obviously has a different pay rate, but if you are, you know, if you work 20 days, you earn a bonus, you know, 30 days. I was just curious to know if that was built into the structure as a bit of an incentive to get people and then have them want to come back and, you know, because it might be work for them. So I was just wondering if you could speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great point. That's also something we didn't revisit with this proposal, but the district does offer $250 if you're there for 20 days. And every 20 days after that, you get, it goes up by like $25. It's like 250, 275, 300. So you get those additional bonuses. So that's just a, not something that every district does. It's been a district practice here, at least since I've been here. So I know people do appreciate it.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, that wraps up our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion.
All right, we have just one item for our discussion, and that is an update. I know Dr. Cunningham put in a memo for all of you as well as a slide. So I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Cunningham if he wants to review the slides that you have or any type of questions or overview of the memo of the change of the report cards at the middle school going from letter grades to standards.
And if you don't mind, Dr. Charmelus, there is one item about enrollment. So just to give a quick update on the enrollment study, we did get a final proposal back. It is from a company called Cropper. Cropper Consulting, that's a gentleman's name. So he did the Fremont enrollment study. So we are proposing conducting a joint enrollment with District 75 and 120. I did compare to Dr. Casarda. You might have heard those enrollment projections before. They are a lot higher than this proposal, which was still high. So with the three-way split with the district, it comes just about $9,000 to do the enrollment study. So with our enrollment still decreasing with the new subdivision being put in, I still think it's a good option to evaluate future construction projects. So if approved, the project would go, we were going to wait for fall enrollment data, so the October 1st numbers. So we anticipate getting it right after Thanksgiving break.
And how many years does that cover again?
It'll be about 10 years, but only five we would consider. Pretty accurate.
Okay.
I've seen a draft document. Fremont spoke very highly of the process and, and, you know, they were using that with a lot of their construction initiatives as well.
Apologize, Eric. Now, what you've all been waiting for, I'm sure. Now, what you've all been waiting for, I'm sure.
Great. Yeah. I'm glad I have the clicker for one slide too. Appreciate it. All right, so as many of the board are aware, this year we are fully implementing standard-based report cards at all grade levels and all subjects. That includes the middle school. And so we use this grade scale of standards of one to four. That's a scale we've been using for elementary. We are at A through eight. We're going to add half steps this year. And that's a, it's a great practice. It's something that we kind of use the Marzano framework, just for the board's reference, that really they're kind of the ones that drive a lot of standards-based best practices. And what half steps allow you to do is show progress, moving toward proficiency. Sometimes it can be arbitrary to show that, and so this is a nice way to capture it. So that'll be included for all students in all grades added, and that's already in the gradebook. So standards, so after gaining some feedback from the community, from some members of the board, the direction that we're going to go is converting grades, excuse me, converting our standards to a letter grade. So we will give a letter grade score for students at each trimester. So I'm going to take a moment to explain that to the board. So what will happen is, let's say, we'll take ELA, for example. ELA, and I give an example in the memo, but let's say in ELA, they have four standards. I think eighth grade ELA, they have four major standards they're going to assess students on that go from a scale of one to four. What teachers will do is they will give a standard score for each of those, a two, a three, a four, whatever it may be, showing that what the student is able to demonstrate their strengths and growth areas. What teachers will do to get the letter grade is what you do is you average those, and then you divide by four, and that, or in this case, divide by four. And then you use a grade conversion scale, which is posted on our website. We're going to present that to the community as well. And so to give you an idea, if you get a three or above, it's an A. 2.5 to 2.99 is a B. 2.0 to a 2.49 is a C. And then beyond that, you have, no one gets below a one, essentially. One would be considered not quite passing yet. But however, we don't go below one because you, it's just not assessed. If a student doesn't do the work, that makes sense. So the important things to understand in power schools, there are limits to when we can report on the letter grades. So we can be reporting on the standard throughout the trimester. So we have a couple of options that we can make a decision if we want to shore up some of the practice, but at this point, teachers are able to report on how students are doing at each assignment and assign a standard score. They don't have to for every assignment. For those who have high schoolers at either of the high schools, I'll use Stevenson's example. Not every assignment is counted in that final grade. It'll be the same thing for us. No assignment will ever be given a letter grade. The reason being, it messes up the letter grade conversion because it'll calculate it based on whatever that student did. So a student could do homework, and that's practice, and that's great. We're going to report out on what their score was on there. You'll see it in the gradebook. If it's something that's going to count for a standard, what teachers have been asked to do is name that assignment with the max score you can get. So let's say it's out of two, a vocab quiz, a lot of time is a basic skill. It'll say vocab quiz, max score two. A student will have a two next to it if that's what they earned for that score. So parents can see what's happening. The challenge with grade conversion is that parents will not, parents and students will not see a letter grade in the gradebook until progress reports because it requires manual conversion work. So the gradebook does not allow us, Power School does not allow us to do it. Sometimes Infinite Campus, some of the other ones claim they can. They don't necessarily do a great job of it. So we'll have a point right before progress reports where teachers will calculate that and post what the letter grade is at progress reports to give an idea of what's happening. Honor roll will remain the same. So in terms of how we do honor roll at the middle school, it's based on letter grades and your spirit qualities, or excuse me, that's the old term, Wolf Pack qualities. That still is the same format for how we'll calculate that. The grade conversion table's already on our website. Sample report card, we're just working on finalizing right now. And then all proficiency scales, K through eight, are going up on our website as we speak. We're trying to have all, they were due for all staff at the end of the summer. So we're trying to get the, we believe we'll get them up by curriculum night. And so the idea is that you want to, if you want to understand how your student can earn a four, if you will, or three, every parent has access to every scale and every subject grades K through eight. So as I talk about this, the likelihood of that us making revisions at the middle school level in terms of some of the reporting is, is high. There are chance, we are probably going to do that. Doesn't mean students aren't learning, doesn't mean we're not reporting. But for example, if we find that there's too much of a discrepancy, we can always go to a model where everything that goes in the gradebook is out of four, which means that you report on less. Like maybe you'll have three, four major assignments in a trimester. So that is kind of the trade-off there. We are not doing that right now. We're trying to do what we consider to be kind of the textbook best practice, where you report every time a standard's assessed. But if we find that we don't like the consistency, we will make that change. So hopefully that made sense. We hope it does to parents next week because we're going to explain it to them. And I've given on the middle school slide to walk through that. Really, the major probably piece is understanding how grades are converted over. This is a pretty standard practice. What happens, some districts do this, some districts don't. Some districts average it, some districts don't. The examples I showed to the staff most recently is Fremont, where they kind of average it, but they don't give a letter grade. And then Glen Allen, which originally they didn't average it when I presented it two years ago, but now they do to a letter grade. I'm guessing the community was looking for that. My students went to high school and just made that transition. So that is where we are right now with it. Again, we're, community feedback's going to be very important to us. Really, the six-week mark is the first major mark where things will need to be converted to a grade, though the teachers still have the same expectation that grades must be up every two weeks in current at the middle school level, so that all that's available. But we are not telling students, oh, this does not count in your final grade when they're doing work, so that we have to be very careful with our messaging with that. And so, because everything is important, it does inform us. But that is a big shift. A lot of times you go to standards-based. So to give another example, I know I'm talking a little bit here, but I just want to make sure I'm covering those bases. Stevenson, for example, uses a process where the teachers are giving this update of like, you're on progress, you're ahead of progress ever it is. Really, we don't have that necessary capability at this point. If we want to go that way, we can, though. The idea is that teachers will be reporting the actual standard that the students will be getting. And then basically, the gradebook will take the most recent standard score. That'll be the one that shows up on their report card. So teachers can override at any point, but to give an idea of where students stand, that's how we'll treat it. So questions, please?
How is it going to be communicated out to the students? Like, is it going to be communicated per teacher, per subject?
Well, initially, yes. I know that we have an assembly coming up. We haven't necessarily branded it all the way through because each teacher was going to, well, it's all the same, but in terms of how the teachers report it, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. So I, we had not had a plan to do it all together. I guess, long story short, we're going to explain it by first or third period teacher.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, and I'll talk with Mr. Peterson and see if we still like that as our best option. But yeah, thank you.
I just had a quick question for those thinking about like our eighth grade students who are going to be taking some entry exams, whether they go to Mundaline or Stevenson. Does this, I'm assuming it doesn't, but does this new, you know, standards-based impact anything with perhaps teacher placement? I know that parents can, you know, discuss with their student's counselor and kind of, but as far as a baseline, will this do anything to make it more challenging to our teachers to kind of make sure that, that our eighth grade students are initially placed in the most accurate, at the time, the most accurate classes moving into the high school?
That's a great question. Really, how both high schools typically place it is they look at that, they want to see the star scores, and that's where they initially will place students, and then the teachers will review it. So if anything, it'll help the teachers be able to articulate what skills students are able to do or not, if that makes sense. So it probably will be an enhancement to be able, or to be able to concretely say to a student or a family, here's the skills I'm seeing that they have or they might be lacking and things like, even if a family chooses, we're going to go for it. We're going to go for the higher level to be able to say, here are the skills that we are working. Like, it's, hopefully it'll be clear to families, here are the skills, the strength and growth areas.
Great, does anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, moving on to freedom of information requests. We did not have any notices and communications. There is the back-to-school video as well as some back-to-school links for the board, combined with a bunch of links to information from SEDO. And then the piece that I wanted to point out is the.
I was waiting for you. We were just going to show you the video.
Oh, I didn't show the video. I just was glossing over. Kind of the corner of my eye, saw a lot of movement. You know what video, though, I would like you to show is could you please show the video from the lunch, which is your family's talking about all of you? Because I think the board should see that. Especially, yours is particularly funny, too.
Yeah, we could show that. Do you have it up? While we're waiting, I'll share with you. Reluctantly, this video was put together because the introduction video that Joy is referring to, back in the start of the summer, before everybody left, I said, you know, I'd love to do something more personalized to introduce each of you and what you do since we were going to have so many new staff, just from the lens of the people that love and know you the most. So you could pick whoever you want out of this template of just who you are, what you do, your title, your position, and then you could pick anybody that you want to introduce you. So Mr. Hanson did a very nice job conceptualizing, right, Tim? We were just talking about this at our HumanX presentation, but one of Eric's talents, and the board knows now what the talents are, but one of Eric's strongest talents is conceptualizing. So he took all of our loved ones' introductions of us. And trust me, there are nine different personalities at this table, and there are even more that live at home with us. So you get to see how he put it all together and made it a uniform presentation. And as Joy said, it was very well-received from our staff. I got a lot of compliments on how just powerful and impactful it was. So go ahead, Eric. Show them your work on.
That's Dada, that's right. And where does Dada work? That's right. Doris, what does Daddy do at the school? Uh huh. He's the air main speaker at the school. And what do we love about Daddy? He makes you laugh. Oh, my goodness, I know, he's so funny. Doris, what makes Daddy special? I totally agree. Daddy loves people so much, and he loves to see them learn and grow. That's the best. So someone's my favorite.
My dad is Brandon Peterson. He's the principal at your school. He does principal. Is special because he takes me to Iowa. My guy is special because he takes me long by class.
You do it.
What does he do?
Um, talks about his job.
Yeah, what does he, what does he do?
He, um, he's a, he works at three schools.
Okay, what does he do there?
He helps fix stuff.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
He, um, whenever something's like, whenever something went wrong, he fixes it. Like, it's like, if one of the like air compressors or something, like, kind of like.
One thing that makes your dad special that you want everybody to know? What's special about Dad?
That he does, gives us food, he bakes food. He can batch prepare ramen. He, he puts it every day.
Yeah. What's something that other people don't know that?
He's strong.
Yeah?
People know that.
So how do we feel about Dad overall?
Amazing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cute.
My dad is amazing at his job.
And he is, what's his job title?
And he is a director. Situation and personnel.
What's one thing that makes your dad special that you want everyone to know?
That he's really dedicated to his job, and he does a good job and tries his best to help everyone no matter what.
He's, he always tries his best and he's a really good dad.
How does he show he cares about other people?
By trying to help them and doing what he thinks is best for them. Because in college, he helps teachers and they develop in the school.
My mom is Dr. Erica Berger, and she is the Director of Engagement and Growth. She visits classrooms, supports students, teachers, and families, and brings new ideas to teams to ensure academic and professional learning and growth. My mom is really special in that she will always find a way to bring peace, love, and joy to everyone she works with. Commitment, dedication, and involvement in the District 76 community, along with Peloton workouts and making sure my outfits sparkle are top on her list.
Eric Hanson, the Director of Technology and Communications at Diamond Lake School District 76, has been a driving force behind the district's technological advancements. With a career spanning over a decade, Eric has successfully implemented a district-wide one colon one device program, ensuring every student has access to personal technology for learning. His leadership during the transition to remote learning amidst the COVID-19 pandemic was commendable as he swiftly established robust virtual classrooms and support systems. Eric also spearheads innovative communication strategies, enhancing engagement with the community through social media and digital newsletters. His dedication to fostering a technologically enriched learning environment has earned him widespread recognition and respect within the educational community.
Hi, I'm David. My mom is Robin, but she is the Director of Student Services. I'm not really sure what she does at work, but I think she makes sure kids have what they need. One thing special about my mom is that she's nice and caring. She shows she cares about others by listening to them and trying to help them.
What's your dad's name? And what is your dad's job title?
Director of Finex in Operations.
And what does your dad do at his?
Uh, he works.
He works. And what is one thing that you want people to know about your dad?
That he's kind.
That he's kind?
Yeah.
And what makes him so special?
Play video games with me.
What else does he do?
Uh, be kind to me.
Be kind to you and your brother?
Uh, play with him.
Yeah. Do you love him?
Yeah. I love him.
Our mom, Dr. Barbara Charmelis, as we all know, District 76, started from a teacher all the way to the superintendent. And the one thing I love about how my mom went through that process and still today is how she still connects with each individual person inside the building, whether that's a staff member or a student. She loves to connect with each person and makes sure each individual feels special. Even though sometimes her crazy tactics can be somewhat using, but I still love how she loves each individual person in the building.
One thing I love about my mom is how dedicated she is to the profession and making sure everyone gets better each and every day. Even though, like Clark said, she can be crazy, especially after a couple of margaritas in her, she still makes sure that everyone is loved and she does her best every single day. So we love you, mom. Enjoy the next school year. Sparkle on. Love you, mom.
For sharing your loved ones with us. So yeah, it was fun to do and it's fun to watch.
So I thought it was really cute to see.
Thank you. We, we had fun with it. Some more than others, but.
Yes, you can tell. Fantastic. Okay. The next thing for notices and communications is that IASB Resolutions Committee recommendation. So a couple of board meetings ago, we discussed joining with some of our neighboring districts to support a resolution that District 103 had proposed, which basically would allow schools that do not have their building as a polling place to remain open rather than having to take that day in the holiday. And so, um, I, I don't know. I guess I was surprised, but the, because I feel like we never agree with the Resolutions Committee. But they liked the position because it does provide for local control and they are recommending that it is adopted. And the resolution will be brought to the Delegate Assembly at Triple I on November 23rd. So I thought that was fantastic news. And it also was nice to be able to work with District 103 and District 73 to put together a resolution that I think is, you know, widely beneficial to most districts in the state. So there's the update on that. And then the next item is just save the dates for 2024, 2025, which I thought was a really nice graphic that was put together for families and the community to be able to see all of the relevant back-to-school information in one place. Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, moving on to others. Do we have any others this evening? Yes.
A lot of administrative changes on the board there, on the exec board. They appointed a treasurer. They talked about the property transfer of South School to District 75. A bigger part of budget, well, a bigger part of the meeting was a presentation of the final budget. And they have a large budget and a lot of moving parts and pieces. And the last thing was discussion of their superintendent. They have an interim shared superintendency. And that position is very, very hard to fill and they haven't even begun the process. Really, that was about it for SEDOL.
Thank you for that update and thank you for attending and representing our board. Does anyone else have any others?
Yeah, of course. Okay, so I would like to introduce four of our audience members. As we all know, we received the generous grant that we're sharing with North Chicago over a period of five years. It's the Full Service Community Schools Grant, and it was in an award of $13.5 million. So with that, we have Dr. Mitzi Rodriguez, who is the grant coordinator and has been assigned to our school as well as with North Chicago. And then at our site, our district coordinator is Susalee Garcia. And at DLS, we have Monica Jimenez. And at West Oak Middle School, we have Brenda Campos. Thank you. I know you all attended the PTO meeting. They were at our back-to-school institute days. They've been around our school for the past few days. So it's great for them to get to know the kids. We are, have just in the process of hiring, I understand, the West Oak Intermediate School Site Coordinator. And she will be starting on September 3rd. So we're excited to welcome her as well. And so thank you again for your support.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's so nice to meet all of you. You're welcome. Okay, if we do not have any other others, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Second.
Mr. Betho?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Angelola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Outman?
Yes.
Mr. Candela?
Ms. Solis?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank all of you. Welcome back to school. Hope you're having a great first week.
Thank you.